A big load of asphalt or something. Had three boxes left to deal with.
Probably ain't calling me into work. I don't want to have a chance to review the minutes from last month. Any minutes? Can we push them through? Second floating around out there? Further discussion?
Justin, how do you spell your name?
One S. First letter is a S. Two S's.
Two S's.
All favor? Any votes? Please uncommonants, Commissioner Shields?
I appreciate the job this group did in regards to the cell tower work for leadership that had here. We approved it at a board meeting Tuesday night. And it's on record now, I guess I could say, as official. And we are looking at a... You've got to be careful because I think the... You've got to decide now if the last school board, not school board, kind of commissioner board was one part of that one, kind of moved the responsibility of plan board to design some kind of cell or internet thing. It's bigger than this group here. So we handed it back to the commissioners the other night. And basically what we're saying, where we're going here and what we're doing for the next meeting in October, Carl, if you help me, we're asking our county manager to make contact with Verizon, DNET, Marshall, and Frontier to come and do a presentation, a short presentation, just kind of like, where we going here? We have some things going on in our communities, especially one community, that kind of may be a model that we can use. But we got to know who's interested in this model. Let me give you an example. You could say, Cardu J., they've organized, they've got 50-plus families, as I say. Carl, you can help me out if you know more about this. Then what happens is your community then comes to a provider and says, look, we have these customers for you. We would like to have access, cell or internet. You know, we're here. Not... The provider doesn't have to go out and find the customer. The customer's going to come to the provider. So it's kind of a new model. And you could take that same model, but it probably springs. But like, you can kind of adapt it. So we're asking them to come and speak to us. So we kind of know who the players are, who really want to be players. And so you're welcome. Again, I want to say I appreciate Carl. I put him on the spot the other night, saying, hey, Carl, help me out here. He knows the language. Now, anything I missed in here, Carl, that we talked about the other night. And, but we are... Where we going here? That's where we are at the next meeting, trying to bring in the providers to see where they are within our county. And then we'll know where to go from there. Now, do you pass this to the planning board? I still think it's a big... It may be bigger than the planning board. I heard people talk about consultants and those type of things. And you may be, may enter that arena. So I just think it's one little basic step at a time right now, trying to get some cell phone. I'm just talking to... Evan, Evan, Evan's brother. I knew his brother. I was just calling Mr. Harold. I heard a page a year, a few weeks ago, that he had 20 acres. And there was a question about surface there. And he used the term, you're on the right side. And I didn't know what that meant. I didn't know if you had a power, if you're on the right side of it. But I think his property was in Play Camp. But I think my concern is, we may be losing stuff from an economical standpoint because we don't have some of this service. It was a big time. And so trying to plug that in. And my other part of this, I want to make sure that young people make the county. I don't care where you live, have the same access as somebody in Charlotte. When you go to Western Carolina University, when you walk into a classroom, I want our young people to have, understand the same technology language as you hear it there. Having had two boom two there. There is a language, there is a... When you get out of the mountains and the... There's, you have more access to technology. And I'd like to think that our kids, at least be, most be, been on the table for it. And we have families who have this. And you have families who don't have it. And a lot of the families, or some of the families who don't have it, they would love to have it. It's not an economic thing. It's not that they can't afford the monthly payments. They're living in the wrong look. And then I talked with Betty a week or so ago. We talked about towers and things like this. Remember, I'm... I'll admit I'm ignorant of this stuff, so I just have to keep plowing through it. When we had a person from Santa Ana to call. And as I was going to show, he and I were talking. And he said that he just leased his cell tower to Apex. See, I don't know who A-P-E-X is. Then I called Betty and I said, Betty, I believe you've had a transfer of your cell tower. Who'd you transfer it to? She said Apex. I don't know these people. Jack, did Amber Crawford, did we... You can get all the paperwork done or whatever.
I'm not seeing any of their shit.
But Apex is an installer or they're constructed.
They've owned the tower and they've leased the space.
I didn't know anything about that. Apex is so familiar.
Right, but it's still yours.
It's our one.
Yeah, and it's under that name now. So this thing's got to be in... We're staring, and we're just trying to... The economic part of it, the education part of it is my greatest concern. And I'm sure each one of you may have other concern. If Evan's losing money, that means our college are losing money. If I've got a child or children up here somewhere that's not getting access, what's somebody else's access? Their education has been hit. And I just think you have to buy more. Hey, Mr. President.
Hey.
How are you, Commissioner?
I'm good, sir.
Sit forward. Where you want. Carl, anything you need to add to that?
Thank you, Commissioner Shields.
Sitting here.
Public comment, any members of the press have a comment? Presentations, we have a representative from the Macon County Airport Authority tonight. Jack, can you just kind of give us a little, you know, more about this than I do? So we could just kind of brief the board as to what's going on.
If you don't know Mr. Miles Gregory, he's been a very active part of Macon County for a very long time. He lives in the same neighborhood as House Robinson, he says, and he's a neighbor, or what that's worth. But he's been very active politically and as a city leader in the community. And he is the chairman, now the chairman of the Macon County Airport Authority. At a recent local jurisdiction collaboration meeting about our transportation needs, it was brought to our attention that Macon County Airport might be available for DOT money for expansion. But we didn't have that in the plan anymore, and that cost us some of our points. And I discussed a little bit with y'all in the past how the Department of Transportation used the point system to bring something to the top. Well, this came to the top. It's not on plan, but the Department of Transportation said that in lieu of that, this time, they would accept a letter from the Board of Commissioners, which we talked about tonight, Commissioner Shields, supported the project. So I went at their last meeting, the Air Force Authority's last meeting in July, asked to just let them know that we would be interested to hear because we really need your input for this plan. So we don't get caught like this again. We want to make sure that we include our airport authorities' concerns and planning in our comprehensive planning, and just kind of make it count. And we invited Mr. Gregory to come and speak to that. He could tell us about our airport, about the authority, about what your desires are, or anything you want from Mr. Gregory.
That's right.
Thanks for me?
Oh, okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for inviting me to come speak to y'all. This is the first time I've been here. And I came earlier to be sure that I knew where the place is at. Since I've been here. Anyway, I appreciate the opportunity to be here and talk to you. And I'm always sort of kind of talking about the airport, how I'm going to hold that. And, but I try to not be so patient about this afternoon, but let you know what is going on. As you know, I've been the chairman of the airport authority since inception. And that's 14 years. And I've been on the airport commission even before that. So I spent several years working with the airport. And having said that, the reason I have devoted so much time to the airport, I realize how very, very important the airport is to Macon County, and even to the surrounding area to you. That's really, basically, that's one of the best economic tools that we have here in Macon County to promote industry here. And more without, without an airport industry, it's a fair industry in county, which I don't know what is. They don't drive anymore, they fly. And if you don't have airport, you're out of nothing. So that's why we've been very diligent and very committed to developing the airport. Every member of our airport authority, I feel the same way that I do. So I think I can speak for all of you this afternoon. But we've come a long ways. I guess most of you have been there, and I hope you have, at the airport. And seeing what we've got, we've got a nice terminal, as you'll find, in the area in southeast. That's what we've been told of pilots, if I could elaborate. So we really appreciate the fact that the commissioners, for a number of years, has supported the airport, the projects that we work on. And they've been very, very supportive of all of our efforts. And we're grateful to them for that. And I guess it's been about a couple of months ago or so, I got a call from a commissioner over in Cherokee County, I call it. But he said he had been over here and looked at our airport. And he said, I just want to know how y'all got that nice airport in Macon County. And so I listened to it, just to tell me, so I said, let me ask you a question. I said, how does commissioners, how do they stand on your airport, airport development? And he said, my God, he said, we can't agree on time of day over here. And so anyway, anyway, they have problems. But we have all worked together. We don't even think about politics. We just do what we feel like is good for Macon County. And we have, we have split board in front of political makeup is concerned. We don't need to talk about it. We, I mean, we hang our politics on the flight board when we go into our meetings. And I said, we don't, we don't think about it. But we're at the point in time, I don't take up too much time, Mr. Chairman, but we're at the stage right now, having accomplished several things that's been pretty positive for the airport. We now have a lot of jet traffic that's coming in through the airport, as we're talking about. These pilots complain to us about, on one thing, they have no problem taking off, but the landing situation is pretty tough. 60,000 pound jet hit runway at 200 miles an hour. They say, burn your brakes up, trying to stop. And so we feel like we have the, we have the room. And we feel like, well, we've got the favor of the, and they do love this airport. In fact, I've been in contact with them nowhere today. And they, they really, really are in favor of what we do to improve airport. So a 60,000 pound jet hits that runway in summertime, in mid-July, temp here about 100 degrees, and I'm a better man. It's probably rough. I'm trying to get it stopped. So we now have been, I think we've been moved up just recently in our priority list to action number one. And what we like to do is extend the runway at 1,000 feet. And give 6,000 feet of runway, which 500 feet on the west end is a piece of cake. And I already taken a local contract from that, of course, I know a little bit about myself. I have a degree coming for 15 years, so I know something about it. So it's really going to be an easy job on the west end because all we have to do is do a little film, break the runway, and then cut maybe a foot, about 150 feet or 200 feet of dead runway, just a little bit. So we don't have to do much damage. And go ahead, grab the blacktop here, and we've got 500 feet on that here, very easy. And then on the other end, on the east end, it's going to be a little more difficult because we're going to have to deal with that creek. But we've already been talking to the two airport engineers, and they can work with us. FAA is going to work with us. So we appreciate your support, anything you can do to help us on it. We're always glad to hear people. And I just got a letter from the Macon County Development Commission. Mr. Chairman, I give you the support and the project. So this, when I go do this like next year, this plan's going to take a little time. And it's probably be three years, maybe four years before we can afford to have a period. So, but we need, we need the support of y'all in support of everybody in Macon or there. And commissioners support it, I think. The money is going to be available to us, about $5 million. So I'd be glad to answer your questions, if you might have a question.
Miles?
Oh, thank you for coming. Oh, couple of questions. The airport, I say it's in Marple, I don't know if it's Andrews or Murphy, but near Marple. But Cornfield Airport over there, how long is it?
50,000.
It's 50,000. And, because I know they get some jet traffic over there because of the parents, because of their lung. Is, when you take out Asheville, you get into Western County, well, six, put it at 6,000 feet, is that going to put us where we need to be in relation to other counties? Are we going to be as long as anybody, or longer?
We'll be the longest runway west of Asheville.
Okay. So that should attract some more of that, that traffic. What about the Jackson County Airport in regards to some issues they have? Is that what it impacts?
Do you know Jackson County? Well, I think, I think they've done a ton of what they're going to do. They're on top of mountains, drop off them on the end of the runway. And it's going to be, and they'll take that, I don't know how hard that's speaking. Something they will prove. They tried to improve it as much as they can, but it's going to be very expensive to do.
How long is that?
33,000.
So our airport is VFR, Visual Flight Route Airport. What is it ever in the plan to become a HFR? Is that feasible, or is that something that's even?
Well, as technology improves, we've talked to the flowers at B about FAA. And it's a possibility. They're going to take a look at it in the next month or two and see if it's possible to put in electronic landing system. They call it WASP. And that would bring planes down to, at least down to about 2,500 feet. Now it's 30, I think it's 30, 35,000. If they could see the runway in 35,000, they got to pull out.
Right.
But they do use a GPS now, unless it's real, real cloudy, the real weather, the real bad. But they are looking at that possibility of getting WASP here. And we might, we also have, we just recently got, and it's unique to this area, we've got a counter system that we can stop. And you could be in Miami, Florida, or Texas, or California, and you could get on that, get on your computer and type in Macon County or it's the airport. And it'll show you like what's going on around the surrounding area. Even the parking lot, cars, runway, everything. And jet pilots are taking that. We've got to do it quick a little bit, but it's not working as well. But not right now, but we're going to improve it. But they do like what we have by now, so.
What's the closest HFR airport to us? Asheville?
I guess it is Asheville. Yeah, I guess Asheville, yeah, yeah.
I believe you also, you've got something else that our airport is going to be able to help the colony in Macon make the chaos.
Oh, yeah, yeah, thank you.
Sure.
Very much. Yeah. We just, that was his project, Tommy Keegan, and that's economic development. To, and you know, if you have a change, if you're down at the windscreen. And if you buy ads, do you want that? And it rode all the time, you know, want to know. And it's in the main lobby. When the pilots come in, they can see what's available and, you know, see pictures of that county. And Tommy, and I'll tell you what, Tony, he's did, and he did a super job. And so if you have an opportunity to take a look at it, that's going to be a great, great trip. Really, they walked in, and they get looking at it, and they'll walk up, start, you know. I've been there when that's happening, and they'll sit there and watch it, go through the whole scenario. Places, ads, whatever, you know, people. It's a good thing. Thank you.
Who are the biggest users of the airport?
I'm sorry?
Who are the biggest users of it? Companies using it, or is it tourism?
It's both. It's both. Now companies are using it. Drake is one of the big users. And I guess, Urtag, Urtag, they both have jets. And, but it's, it's big.
Can you talk about the hangar space down there and the lack of hangar space?
We've had to, yeah, we, and this is something that's all, we don't have to go through DOT to get money for this. We'll get our own money and be a private sort. But we're looking at building some hangar now. There's a big demand. Right now, we have 27 on waiting list for hangar space. And I just got, I got an email from the DOT, which we're asked. They're looking for a hangar with 50,000 square feet somewhere west of North Carolina. And we don't, we don't have it. We keep coming. We've got, sorry, we've got one, it's a gray sky. It's occupied.
Do you have space to build one, I think?
I'm sorry?
Is there space out there to do?
We've got land to do it.
So if there's land to do it, and we've got that much of a waiting list, what's the next process, process of being?
We're, right now, we're waiting.
Did you give me the note?
Yeah. I see, by the way. We're waiting, we, the airport authority has already done that, now it's the oath, that we're not going to renew his lease. We're not going to renew his lease. So, so that, I said that to say this. We can't do all that right now until we get control of, of control of that. Thank you. Without elaborating on it too much. It's September 2018.
When is it up?
September 2018.
And there's nothing we can do at any time?
Well, yeah, we could. But we have chosen not to do anything right now. We've got, we want to get this taxiway project done, and that's going to take a year to get that done. And we finally got through that, so I've been working on that all week just about it. So we finally got, got that road block logged in, out of the way, and it gives us the way today, the way to start.
The reason I ask, I didn't know if there's anything with the comprehensive plan to help you with that project.
No, we're going to be fine. We'll get, you know, we'll get ready, but we can go ahead. And we've already been told, we're going to worry about it, we can get all the money.
So looking maybe 10, 20 years down the line, what would be on the wish list or the airport? If you send the runway at 6,000 feet, build 100,000 square foot of hangar space, what will be the next?
Well, of course, of course, our main, our main goal as the airport authority is safety issues. And so we're going to continue to work on the safety issue definitely. That's the main thing, and that's our goal. But the main thing is that we need some more hangars. And we can accommodate jets, bigger planes. And that's, that's our main goal right now. Any further down the road, I can't, you know, we just don't have a crystal ball to whisper down this road and see what we might need 20 years from now. But I won't be around then anyway, so. Well, some of you younger guys might be okay.
When you talk about the runway, you've expanded 500 feet to the east and 500 feet to the west. Have you maxed out? Is there room for another 1,000 feet, or have you maxed out?
We've maxed out, pretty much.
Okay.
Well, we could, we could go further, but it'd be very expensive. Reason being?
East or west?
West. The east would not max out. That's all we can make it on. But now west would go further, it would just have to wind the cone. If you understand what I mean. We're going to wind the cone, and we're going to have to buy more property. We have to buy some houses out of that interest.
How many acres is that airport?
102.
And other than Drake's new hangar, when was the last hangar constructed prior to that? Has there been any hangar construction?
I guess Phil, Phil Ray, did the last hangar out there this year. They were both, they bought in there at the same time. Yeah. About a year ago, you're going to have to go somewhere.
Yeah, prior to that, when was the last one built?
Oh, my gosh, it's been 10 years long.
So we need to end up with something about the airport authority and comprehensive plans. It may be a separate section, or does it maybe go under the French Constitution?
Oh, it's already under the Constitution now.
Okay, so we need to expand that now, because then it gets separated.
It's in the last conference plan, there's a blurb in there. And this newest draft, it's not there yet. So that's, that's why we need this conversation.
Expand what's on there.
Yeah, we need to collect information and see how the board wishes to inject it into the plan. We need, we need to collect information and see how the board wishes to inject it into the plan. I think, I think, I may speak, I think you've been in transportation program, technology.
I have a couple of questions here. As you expand to the east, how were you all any affected by the floodway, floodplain there? What's, what struggles are you having dealing with that?
Well, we've already, but some of your, uh, our engineers, of course, the DVO and the corporate, corporate engineers. That, leave it out. That creek don't get out too much. There's not a lot of property to be considered for flooding. When that question come up, I remember that.
Yeah, no, that's okay. I just, it's your answer.
But it's not gonna be, it's not gonna be a long time.
What about your archaeological search, maybe you expect to run into problems?
It's not really, we, we have worked, in fact, I talked to Park's president today. He's, he's a man who's, uh, he's actually of Southeast. If he finds me, I'll work for him or not. And also talking to the man in Memphis. He's, I guess, a assistant. To Park over at FAA in Southeast. And they have worked, he's worked for. And we've worked with him, I guess, for two years or longer when I was, we're trying to get that first extension done. And, uh, I told him today, I started, I told him, we try to book. We got throw down the leaves down at one time. It's, we did, it cut off. Our legs cut off on the leaves. But, uh, but they have changed their attitude considerably by working with us. And we, we always try to do everything in a respectful way. And, and, and they know that. And so, uh, I, uh, on this project we're working on now, Taxiway. We had one tribe that looked home to, uh, ask the question. And we would, uh, apprehend about give a story on that. I told him, I told him, I talked to Derek Keegan a couple of weeks ago, you know, this, this park been, it's not very soul, it's been stirred a number of times. And so, you know, uh, it really doesn't matter right now. On the, on the new project, the extension, the expansion of the runway, we'll have to go, you know, do a, and, and we do that. We want to.
Do you know on average, how many flights are there daily in that airport?
Really, I don't. I don't know. I don't have that figure.
Maybe helpful to add that.
But it's picked up. I'll put it this way, it's, it's really increased.
Yeah, maybe if we could get, just to show how the expansion of airport recent years has increased traffic. I think that might be good to.
Just that's what it would hurt.
Most of the planes that fly into the airport, do those folks stay in Macon County or do they fly into Macon County and disperse throughout the western part of the state?
They, most of them stay in Macon. Some of them go to Redding County. And, and some of, some of them go to Paris, over at your key. And just to give you, just to give you a little bit of, uh, an example of what this airport means to, to Macon County. I've been, on two occasions, I've been, just before Thanksgiving, this nice big jet came in, four girls got off, off the jet. And there's a car picked them up. I, I went to pay at a station, but they got this car late. So the pilot came in and I said, you know, what's going on here? I wanna find out. I'm a little bit nosy. So I said, uh, what's going on? And he said, these girls are from East Jersey, Kentucky. There's a wedding going on up at. And, uh, I said, they were, they were going up there. The wedding is on Thursday. I said, uh, I said, uh, I've gotta come back Sunday and pick them up. Now, tell me, people don't have money this dead time. I tell them. And about, just recently, about three weeks ago, there's a couple of girls came in, were calling about jet, picking up to, uh. Why is it on that?
Farm?
On whatever, to, oh, neighbors in. And they went up there, uh, to a wedding. Your neighbors in. So that's just one example of what, uh, what goes on in Macon. They spend money. I mean, they come to spend, so they spend money. So it's good for Highlands. And I, 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 I was, I was talking to the mayor of Highlands the other day. He needs to give us a letter of support to this group here, so. Say you would, so, but I haven't seen you yet. Are you fine?
Yeah.
Said, what's your name?
Bill Keegan.
I'll talk to him. You might encourage him to do that.
Talk to him.
Okay.
I believe a chaos has a number of powers. It doesn't always present as.
You have to remain aware, so I have one more question.
Sure.
How long, do these planes and jets get, I mean, are they charged when they land in Macon County?
So, there's, there's a fellow scout place in Highlands. It comes in here in a Gulfstream jet to play golf. He gets out of the jet, puts his gut bag over his shoulder and gets, somebody picks him up. And he goes up, up, up past, he's got a home up there, I suppose. Goes up there and hair stuff.
And so, I mean, like, do they pay an annual fee to use the airport or how does that work?
Uh, no, they just, they just pay so much for Italian when they come in.
Okay.
They pay so much.
So they rent space per second?
Uh, Neil Harvey is FBO, so, but he, he's got control right now of, of the space that's available. And, and of course he charges them. I don't quite charge them, but it's very reasonable of his fee to, you know, take care of the plane, you know, a lot of here, so. So we gotta go by, ladies gentlemen, down in that airport. They don't question about Macon County.
Not, not to speak out of turn.
Go ahead.
Um, Miles, you didn't mention a lot of what the airport makes is in fuel revenue. The planes that come in after refuel, that revenue goes to the airport.
Fuel revenue?
Yeah, we get some, we get part of the fuel revenue. Most revenue goes to our FBO, but we get some of it. It may not be, so.
So just thinking of how to incorporate the airport into the plan, I think if we could just show some history, how expansion of the airport has increased of the traffic. And then, the reason we kinda got to where we did today is because there was an expansion that wasn't on your wish list that made it into our plan. So, is there a wish list that we need to add to the plan or is it something as simple as maintain or stay current with safety concerns or modern safety technologies? I mean, how do we, how do we incorporate your wish list into the plan from here before?
Good question. Uh, I guess the best way I can answer that, I'll break it off, we go two or three steps at a time. We don't get carried away. We just do two or three steps, things that we can, know we can get accomplished. And we'll go to another step, another step, another step. And that's where we're at now. We, we, you know, it's kind of been a, a, a party festival for the last twenty years. But, uh, but I don't know, I don't know right now anything. One thing that, that, and I'm reluctant to even mention it. Cause I read the ransom rate, uh, Ryan, and someone said, shut our port down. I believe that's a lie, which they, but we got some people that don't understand and, and I, I try to be, be patient and understanding of these folks. They go right to the repeat. But anyway, uh, one of the things that I think, that I would hope the commissioner will take a look at, one of the things the airport might want to take a look at. You got about a hundred and ten acres around the airport down there. It's choice, choice property. And I got, I got a plane in the, 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 uh, mortgage of airport. What county is that?
Burke.
Pardon?
Burke.
Burke, Burke County. That's developed, uh, an economy business park around the airport. And you've got, you've got a sanctuary around that. You can develop all that property around there and have a business park. Employ people, jobs, you know, they label right there close. And I, and actually I gave, I gave the, uh, ten minute copy, so he's got any fact. There's a bit about, that's a bit about.
Do you ever see a day, when I want to go to Atlanta, like I'm down at the airport and you have a shuttle, you have a service where the passengers are stopping, you have passengers coming on.
Yeah.
Without having your eyes closed.
We've already had some inquiries about shuttle service. We get, leave it up. We get several requests, people fly here and there. We got a couple of guys down there that, that fly in, we'll go get them in recent. But yeah, that's, that's, that's something that all boarders get, get shuttle service. And once we get this runway extended to six thousand feet, this will be a lot easier to track some of that.
You guys, are those people stop on six thousand or is it take a larger?
No, six thousand would be fine.
What's that mean? Little stairs?
Yeah.
So it's feasible to ask that the airport authority come back to us with a long-term, long-term plan of sorts that we've used and what are the requirements of them?
Is anybody else, any thoughts on that?
Looks like we're gonna include it in the comprehensive plan. It needs to be a plan that's based on what, what, they're gonna be, not what the planning board said.
We, we, we have a long-range plan that's filed with DOT. Uh, our engineers have done that a couple of years ago. We can get you a copy of that. A twenty-year plan for that, we're awesome. So we can, we can accommodate you there.
Yeah, I think, I think we could get a little bit of issue for the success of the airport and then share the long-term plan. Have value as, and there's some attachment in its own transportation section. Get it, be there, work with it. That'd be great. Do you have some other questions? Mr. Gregory, thank you for your time this evening. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for inviting me here. I get carried away when I start talking back there. And I hold an important event, uh, two months. But, uh, thanks so much for inviting me down. We appreciate your support and I'm saying, perfect, so. But what, the secret of Macon County's success, I'll plug, I'll plug everybody in this statement. The secret of Macon County's success, every pilot working together. Uh, some of these candidates, I'm not Macon candidates, but they fight one another and they can't give nothing to another. I mean, that's, that's very, very obvious. Macon County, so we've worked together. We, we, we agree on the plan. We all get behind it. We go. And that's why we're so successful here in Macon. We get our confidence. Other candidates, they won't, they won't.
Thank you again. I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Tom, if you'll just get that stuff to Jack, maybe you can just incorporate it.
Are you, are you a gentleman?
I am.
Okay, I'll show that. I have a thing, excuse me. What is your name?
My name's Chris Hanners. H N E R S.
May I say what?
N N E R S.
Okay.
What's your phone number? It's three seven one zero seven nine three.
Thank you very much.
No problem. I appreciate it. Okay, great. All right, on the whole business. We've made one or two small revisions to the cell phone tower, fiber maps, Jack wanted to share. And then I think we're ready to send these on to the commissioners. Go ahead and make comments on it. One addition to the map was a fire line over in the top.
The, uh, the addition that I was asked to add to this was the line over at the Mount Hill School. And to leap the circle around town Franklin since it's not a consistent, uh, connection. There'll be a note attached to this that, as mentioned in last meeting, that here becomes a lot of pressure in here and it's spotty. Something that I can actually guess for without being attached to which map. Didn't want to be as, well, we just.
It's like the.
That would be the one that goes to the.
That's the new line.
This one's the one.
Which that's good. I mean, that's. I also added, I've, I've got to mention, out to Union Academy, that's out making.
Eight-foot tower. So comments, questions, discussion?
Ten properties around the range.
It's not included because it's not, it's not been permitted here. They're, uh, just in the planning stages.
So how about the title that references high-speed internet? You've been calling it broadband service? Do you want to change that title to say broadband or go high-speed internet? We've been referring to our project as broadband. And the title of that map is high-speed internet.
Actually broadband.
So. It's pretty much South Harris and, I think from, uh, Boston West, Fire. From all here, other than that, I only have Boston West.
That's Boston West that comes in, uh, through cashiers?
So it is. No more snow frontier, would be it.
There's Duke. There's some, some of those lines belong to Duke Tower. And so Duke is on the map. They're not defined as who the riders are that own this line. And we have reached out to Morris with no response more than once.
Only from the, yeah, this person, you know, the avalanche and showing that red is red.
All the, from the, the asked person, you know, the avalanche showing that red is roads. So, there's a lot of confusion that red is served. And yellow is fiber.
Is that what you're saying now, when you're looking at red and yellow?
Yeah, red is roads, yeah. Red is it served. I'm assuming it's roads.
It's roads, that's right.
I'm just analyzing, so there's not, you know, there's confusion down on Pop Station that's, oh, what's served? It must be DSL or something.
You have consensus on that?
Some, we don't have. Don't know. Several times I've said, I feel like with that cell tower, that aren't actually obviously designated a different color or something. That avalanche somehow. And there's still others saying, "Well, I'm asking for something that's not pleasurable, or we don't want to do it." Just give me...
We have reached out to the tower owners and to the providers. We're gonna try to find out which towers have providers on them and who the providers were. And the phone calls have gone unanswered. So, it's proprietary, I'm sure, and they don't want to release that information, it's my guess.
Pretty much, I think so.
I told you.
Well, Justin, I was... I thought that one was...
Why didn't that produce in the Foster Road flats? That's the photo that's just not built, I mean...
Yeah, and it's probably never going to be that.
It's permitted or it's approved?
So, I really think, I mean, does anybody else know anything in Southern Rainbow Springs or something?
It's the one up on Wine Springs, it's just radio, or does it have? I don't know if it has any cell service on it or not.
Which?
The one up by Wyon?
Wyon, I think that one's good on.
It has cell service up there?
Yeah. I don't know if you're sure. Because I don't plan on beginning discussions from some other places when I get up in there. If you set a real estate, you figure out which area you've got to go to and call somebody. It's nowhere staying.
Which, like, turn... Also, I guess the question is, do you want to guess which ones we think have the cell service on? And we'll know if it's AT&amp;T, if it's US Sailor, or Verizon.
I don't think we made a candidate provider that's been active. Do you know any others that are on?
I mean, what is, what's not active over in that, that part?
I don't know, that's why I'm asking you.
Okay.
So, mine, I think that's the only one. And that down is, Apex bought that. I'm trying to figure out who Apex is. Apex, I talked to Apex last week. They're, they're just a tower company. And that's all they do is install a tower?
I try Apex. Apex is the one that got the one approved on WNEGAP, which is different bill. Because I guess Verizon had it, and wanted it, has it come back? And now, it's, it's, yeah, let's go ahead and build it. They have committed. They were, they were committed, but then once they got approved, then they come back to have it.
Go to the middle, man. They can do the construction in several, to Verizon or AT&amp;T.
Or whoever.
Whoever.
Whatever you want.
So, basically, what it comes down to is, Red Rainbow Springs ain't working is because Verizon don't own it, AT&amp;T don't. Because there's not enough people that would use that tower on a regular basis. There's not enough houses. There's not traffic, we just don't have enough house. You could call Apex and say, "I want to put a radio upon that tower." And that's okay. That's fine, we've made, really made the contract. By the way, it's dark, quiet, they're just, take a lot, you know, that's their business, so they're very happy to work with it.
Well, I'm not trying to be pushy. I mean, if there's a reason to not indicate that, then that's fine. But I mean, I think that's sort of misleading.
You're not gonna be able to tell what, who's on what tower?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, that's the project, so, but, you know, I think, I think if you want to note that on this day, as far as we know, Rainbow Springs is not active. Then I think you've provided that information to the plan. But beyond that, I don't think it's reasonable to try to put a limit on it.
No, I think the tower should remain on the map in some, some way. Because whatever Rainbow Springs community wants to do with Holly Springs community is do and try to put their internet service together. And then they know there's a tower up there, they could maybe put a radio on there. I mean, that information's...
Because that cell tower could be used as broadband traditionally. I think that this would be a good place for somebody who's trying to do that to go and see that.
Jack, the wonder about Foster Road, has anything been done, I mean, about 10 years ago when they proposed that? Has anything else been done since then? I'm not saying it's probably something that I didn't think.
Is it not built?
Oh, it's not, nothing's been done on that. It was approved?
I'm pretty sure it was. I put out on my good approval sheet.
But obviously, they would have permitted it. So, is that even, is there even a reason to have that on the map?
Matt had that on there.
Okay. I mean, it's just... I mean, there's no reason for it. They don't, I mean, they're not, I was talking to the owner of the property the other day. She hasn't spoken with, well, who was, the 18th, they went 18 years. Prior to that, singular. Singular somebody, I mean, it's been that long together. And I'm hoping there's a reason we keep that.
Okay, so a couple amendments I hear is amendments to the title. To replace high-speed internet and broadband. Now, a legend that denotes what the colors represent. Red is roads, yellow is fiber.
It needs green stars.
Green stars are towers.
Yes, the elements, our EJ. It's a five city.